Here in the Santa Clarita Valley, we get so little rain. But we have three easy ways to save water each month of the summer. One, make sure your sprinklers work and don't aim at the sidewalk. You'll save 500 gallons. Two, don't forget this 25 cent washer to fix leaks and save 600 gallons. Three, plant things native to our valley and save 750 gallons. It's so easy, even I can do it. But you're the one who can save money and water for our future.
This evening, we have our invocation given to us by Councilmember West. Lorraine?
Mayor, excuse me, we need to take follow-up from the special meeting.
We had a closed session, I'm sorry. Carl, your report?
Yes, Mayor and members of the council, as a result of the closed session just concluded, no action was taken by the council required to be reported.
Thank you. Now you're up, Lorraine.
Thank you, Mayor Keller. Yesterday was Memorial Day, and our President took time to recognize this very important day with a prayer for peace, and I'd like to read a portion of his remarks since it was such an incredibly well-attended event yesterday. We had a fabulous weekend of turnout for support for our veterans and our military. On Memorial Day, Americans pause with solemn gratitude and deep respect for all fallen servicemen and women who have given their lives for our country and our freedom. Through the generations, the courageous and selfless patriots of our armed forces have secured our liberty and borne its great and precious cost. When it has mattered most, patriots from every corner of our nation have taken up arms to uphold the ideals that make our country a beacon of hope and freedom for the entire world. By answering the call of duty with valor and unrelenting determination, they have set a standard of courage and idealism that inspires us all. All Americans honor the memory of the lives that have been lost in defense of our freedom. Our nation mourns them, and their example of strength and perseverance gives us resolve. We are also thankful to those who have stood by our servicemen and women in times of war and times of peace. Today, the members of our armed forces follow in a proud tradition handed down to them by heroes that served before them. They are protecting our nation, advancing the blessings of freedom, and laying the foundation for more peaceful tomorrow through service that exemplifies the good and decent character of our nation. America is grateful to all those who have worn the uniform of the armed forces of the United States, and we will never forget their sacrifices for our liberty. On Memorial Day, we honor all those who have fallen by remembering their noble sacrifice for freedom, and we also pray for our troops and their families for the peace we all seek. Thank you, Mayor. I know you have some comments about yesterday's wonderful service.
Thank you very much. We're called order, real call, please.
Councilmember Ender?
Here.
Councilmember West?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Ferry?
Here.
Councilmember McLean?
Here.
Mayor Keller?
Here.
Thank you.
This evening, our flag salute will be given to us by the Boy Scout Troop II Mustang Patrol. Okay, this evening, we have some awards recognition to members of the community, and I'm going to call upon our councilmember Frank Ferry. Actually, I better call him Pro Tim Frank Ferry to make those presentations.
First program, the city of Santa Clarita really has made a commitment to its youth, its teenagers here, especially in prevention intervention programs. There's a very successful program, which is Vital Intervention and Directional Alternatives. It's called VITA, VITA program, and it's basically a way of taking high-at-risk kids and through individual counseling, group counseling, family counseling, physical, they do physical training, they do community service, they have their own probation officer. We have seen an absolute turnaround in youth that would've ended up in our juvenile detention and our legal system. And we're very fortunate that this year Deputy Timothy Ferron is being recognized as the VITA Deputy of the Year. Deputy Ferron has demonstrated an astounding dedication to redirecting the negative behaviors of youth in this program and is responsible for teaching them personal accountability. I know the mayor, along with the rest of the council, want to thank Deputy Ferron and the city for his devotion and allegiance to the youth from Santa Clarita. At this time, if we could ask Deputy Ferron to come up, we'd like to honor him. And he's not here.
I am not Deputy Ferron, but unfortunately, he did get called away at the last second, and I was going to try to get the word to you before we got started. But I would like to accept the acknowledgement on his behalf. Hopefully, it's something we can do again because he's definitely well-deserving and something that...
We can hold it until he comes another night.
I appreciate that.
Because I know, is his family here?
No, he got called away for a personal emergency.
So I want to hand this over to the city clerk, because he needs to wait for his family to... The next is another outstanding program that we're one of the few communities that participates as actively as we do, and that's the Success Through Awareness and Resistance Program, also known as STAR, a program that goes after our elementary kids in education. Tonight, we're honored to have Sergeant Gomez, Deputy Gubron, Deputy Mike Shapiro, along with students Nicole Bennett, Diane Dana, and Mary Jane Zuniga to come up and tell us about the STAR program.
Good evening. I'm Sergeant Patrick Gomez. Two of the students are here tonight, Mary Jane Zuniga and Nicole Bennett. And we'd like to have them each take a minute to... Diane Dana? Oh, okay, and Diane Dana, take a minute to talk about what the STAR program means to them.
Okay, well, this is my essay for what the STAR program means to me. Hello, my name is Nicole Bennett. I was selected as a nominee for Student of the Year. Student of the Year isn't just a title for me, it is an honor. Knowing that the Student of the Year title is promoted through the STAR program, it makes me think how this program helps me and kids everywhere with everyday things that happen when we get older. I feel lucky to have this program at my school because I really do learn from it. I think the STAR program is a kid-friendly way of reminding children about society and how it can be handled in a conservative manner. Thinking about how drugs and alcohol is something I need to worry about for the rest of my life, I feel comforted that the STAR program specializes in just that, and kids like me have a sense of what to do in a drug-related situation. This program has helped me become aware of what drugs and alcohol can do to me, my friends and people around someone that is doing drugs. Now, most every kid will tell you that they have been told from either their parents or their school that drugs are bad, smoking can kill you, and that weapons like guns are not things that should be played with. I don't think anyone really knows the real impact all these things have on you until the STAR program really emphasizes the truth. I know that the STAR program has made me realize what being influenced or committing dangerous or wrong crimes and doing drugs can do. But most importantly, the STAR program has made me realize that my judge of character is what will help me throughout life, and knowing that, it makes me feel a lot better about my outlook on everything. Participation in the STAR program is absolutely wonderful, but the fact that participation means that my life and hundreds of other kids' lives will be possibly saved or bettered just because the STAR program is willing to help makes all the difference for me. Thank you for recognizing me, and thank you for making a difference in my decisions in the future.
What STAR program means to me, Mary Jane Zuniga, what the STAR program means to me, Mary Jane Zuniga, is that the deputy gives people an opportunity to be a better person. He teaches them that with responsibility comes great judgment. In seventh grade, they say they're going to give us more responsibility. I remember the STAR deputy telling us about a boy who was late for school, so he ran, and then he dropped his wallet. Someone was walking behind him, and that person had to choose what he was going to do with the money. Was he going to be late and turn the wallet in? That's where his judgment came. Another time, the STAR deputy told us about a girl who was asked if she wanted marijuana. She had steps to use so she could not take the drug. She could say, "Oh, I have to make my bed," or just make up some other excuses. She could say no or act like she did not hear the question and walk away. She could state the facts or be a broken record. Those are some of the steps the deputy taught me. I'm using these examples because if that is the big idea of the deputy's lessons, he teaches us how to choose the right decisions. In my experience, I found out that drugs affect a person's feelings and emotions. That's what causes a person to abuse or hurt themselves because they lose what they love the most. They may abuse kids in various ways, hurt them, or go for things they love the most. Now that, now I know that even though I was in a situation, it doesn't mean I'm different. It actually helped me because people like that set an example. The deputy told us about other examples, not like mine, but there are consequences a person could get for doing a bad thing.
Sorry, I have a bit of a cold, so if I don't sound right, I'm sorry. Um, STAR has helped...
I'm Diane's principal, and she's not feeling good. She was away at Astro Camp for three days and got a cold, but she didn't want to miss tonight, so I'm going to read her essay for her. Is that all right with you, Diane? Okay. Bam. You hear a gunshot, but you know it won't be from me, all because of a simple program called STAR. One of the many things I've learned from STAR is that you should not carry weapons because in a crowded place, one simple act from a gun can create chaos. Among the chaos is school. Whenever somebody bullies a person, it could push them off the edge into creating a massacre. But I know I wouldn't bully a person at all. All in all, STAR taught me to be a good person. You help people, people help you, and everybody is happy. How STAR will affect the choices I make in my lifetime is, they taught me what would happen to you if you do drugs. You will eventually kill yourself. If you carry weapons, you create chaos. If you don't stay in school, you'll spend the rest of your life at the drive-through counter. And finally, if you bully someone, you just plain being mean. STAR helped me figure out these things and remember to play hard and stay in school.
Let me see, we go forward and have a photo taken.
Put it down there?
Yeah.
I have been asked to say a few words about the STAR program. Again, I'm Debbie Bone, and I'm the principal of Sky Blue Mesa Elementary School, and I want to tell you that this is one of the most valuable programs that we have in the elementary schools. The sheriffs come out and they help teach our children resiliency skills. That gives our children a toolbox to take with them so that any time they are approached by anything, somebody offering them drugs or being put in a compromising situation or they come upon a bullying situation, they know what to do. And I think it is one of the best things that we've ever done. I use the verbiage that they use with my fifth and sixth grade students. We have lots of nice discussions about this, and I think that it is absolutely incredibly valuable. I know that I am sending my sixth grade on to junior high equipped with the ability to deal with the kinds of things that they're going to be exposed to. So I, like all the schools in the Santa Clarita Valley, wish to thank the STAR program because it is absolutely exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just real quick, there are seven deputies from the STAR unit who teach in the Santa Clarita schools. Casey McMichael, who's here tonight, Jim Rodella, and Mike Shapiro are here tonight, as well as Jake Gubron, Jeff Donahue, Dave Horner, and Michael Forney. Of those seven deputies, four of them live here in Santa Clarita, and they have children who are currently attending or have attended Santa Clarita schools. We teach at 30 schools within the Sogas Union, New Hall, Silver Springs School Districts, as well as Our Lady of Perpetual Help and Pine Crest Schools. The deputies teach the fifth and sixth grade students, and this year, we're going to anticipate teaching over 1,030 lessons to thousands of children in Santa Clarita. So I want to thank the city council for recognizing the three students tonight. Those are just three essays of hundreds that we have that are very positive and very beneficial program for the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. This time, we'll move to presentations to the city, and Marcia, I believe you've got a recognition to make.
Yes, I'm going to be speaking tonight on an award that our city received from the League of California Cities. These awards are not given lightly. It takes a lot of work, and we need to be very, very proud of it. And we are extremely pleased tonight to recognize the city's Human Resource Manager, Jennifer Curtis, for her expertise and dedication to the city's Human Resources Division. Jennifer received the Professional Excellence Award, which was presented to her by the Personnel and Employee Relations Department of the League of California Cities. This award is presented annually to members of the human resources profession who display leadership, innovation, achievement, and service. Jennifer was recognized for creating and executing the city's comprehensive onboarding program, training and development efforts, job shadowing program, and 360-degree evaluations. I would like to now ask Jennifer Curtis to please come forward so we can congratulate her on this exceptional accomplishment.
Well, as you can see, I've done a pretty good job of passing the workload off tonight, and I'm not through yet. Now, I'm going to invite Laura Hauser to come forward to make some comments. Laura is our chair of the Parks and Recreation and Community Services Council or Commission. Thank you very much, Laura.
Thank you. It's just a great excitement to be here tonight to present to you a very, very special award. And as I move into my comments, I'd also like to have some very special people stand up who have been very instrumental in this award coming to fruition as well. So it's my pleasure tonight to present to you this award that's called the Award of Distinction for a City's Anti-Graffiti Task Force. The Award of Distinction really is a very, very prestigious award that's presented annually by the California Parks and Recreation Society, otherwise known as CPRS because it's a long name. So out of all the awards given during their annual conference, CPRS recognizes out of all of those awards, one agency in the state of California that displays a commitment to new directions, strategic action planning, and commitment to the creation of community through our people, our parks, and our programs. So this award is the CPRS equivalent of the Best Picture Oscar, so just kind of think of it in that way, because it really does represent the best-in-class for the state of California. So in February of this year, I was very pleased to go down to Long Beach with Vice Chair Ed Redd and also staff to receive this honor here on behalf of the city. So we were down in Long Beach. And what this award does is recognizes the Anti-Graffiti Task Force's outstanding effort to tackle what really is a societal issue in terms of graffiti, but we do it in a very creative and proactive way. So we coordinate the efforts of multiple agencies, encouraging interdepartmental collaboration and resident participation, and the city's Graffiti Task Force, which has really had a very positive impact on the quality of life that we cherish so much here in Santa Clarita. So what does this city, our city's Anti-Graffiti Task Force, do that really deserves such wonderful recognition? Well, they use a three-pronged approach. So the first approach that the city uses is a creative outreach program. And this outreach program reaches Santa Clarita youth and informs them of the consequences of graffiti through many different presentations. This includes skits, a book called Graffiti in Tahiti, and the newly-created anti-graffiti video called Tag, You're It. So over 7,000 youth heard that the message was last year alone, and over 500 Santa Clarita parents were also provided resources to help them recognize if their child indeed was a tagger, to be able to provide them with tips for deterring this kind of behavior here in our city. So the second prong to the Anti-Graffiti Task Force is prompt removal of graffiti. Now, last year, nearly 10,000 requests for graffiti removal were made through the graffiti hotline and also via our e-service request system. While the city's removal crew obliterated the majority of the graffiti themselves, 20% was actually also removed through our own volunteers. So in addition to staff and volunteers, teens also remove graffiti as part of the Teens Against Graffiti Program and the Community Youth Court. Also, local organizations are involved, such as LA RC Ranch, who volunteered their time to wipe out graffiti in Santa Clarita as well. And there's always something that we can do day-to-day ourselves, each and every one of us. We can call in when and if we ever see graffiti, whether it be up on walls, on buildings, on stop signs. So any of us can call the hotline number, which is very easy to remember. It's 25CLEAN, C-L-E-A-N. The third prong of the Graffiti Task Force is the apprehension of graffiti vandals, and over 150 arrests of graffiti vandals were made in 2007 with nearly a 100% conviction rate. And this is due in large part to the great collaboration that we have between the city and the Sheriff's Department, and the use of our, what's called, an e-graffiti tracking database, which tracks and records graffiti vandalism data as well as pictures. Last year, this database itself won the League of California Cities Most Coveted Award. And Marcia, you're smiling over there. The Award of Excellence. So the database was created internally by our very own city's Technology Services Division and Community, in collaboration with our Community Services Division. So we truly do have within our city the best of the best of staff who are so creative, so innovative, who not only design but implement these kinds of programs on a day-to-day basis. So I'd like to take a moment, just before I finish up my comments here, to ask staff who is here tonight and also any other volunteers who were able to join us, we'd like to be able to recognize you and also share this wonderful award on your behalf as well. So any staff, volunteers who's here tonight involved with the Anti-Graffiti Task Force, please stand for me. Please give them a round of applause.
Laura, we'd like to invite everybody up for a photograph before we complete as well.
That'd be terrific. Thank you, Bob. Let's see, what else did I want to share with you here? I have some really interesting news to share, and that is that the city's Technology Services staff is working with the Southern California City or some other cities and other agencies to actually contract the use of our e-graffiti application. So staff is in the process of finalizing what's called the Enterprise Software Licensing Agreement, and expects to be able to move forward with this application in July. So it's a terrific way to be able to share this with the rest of the world, as this program, with it being the best-in-class, we have been, we're held up as a model, and it's great that we're able to take this forward and for other cities to be able to benefit from it as well. So with that in mind, I'm sure that the council shares my commendation for the Santa Clarita Anti-Graffiti Task Force, whose efforts truly have made a difference in the quality of life here, continues to make this place a great place to live, work, and play. So I'm proud to present this award to you tonight on behalf of the Parks Recreation Community Services Commission as well as our staff. So may I bring this up to you now and invite everyone else up?
Yes, please, come up. Let's get a photograph. Big gold? Had to squeeze in tight.
Thanks, everybody. Want you to take pictures.
You should pull up forward. No? All right, okay, all right. Never mind.
As folks are returning to their seats, I just wanted to make a comment. You know, I know that graffiti in this community is rather upsetting to every responsible citizen, and certainly occasionally, we get emails and calls from disgruntled community members, and I frankly do not blame them one iota. But when you look at the Anti-Graffiti Program in the city of Santa Clarita... in the city of Santa Clarita and how effective it is, and if we ever lose sight of that, and I, and I say this with the greatest of respect, just go visit the San Fernando Valley. That is a sweet Lord. What a mess. Thank goodness, we have a community that cares. Our volunteers, our staffing, that really go out and tackle this. Now, if we can just get that son of a gun that tagged those new signs on the 14 at Golden Valley, but those signs were put up maybe 10 minutes ago, and five minutes ago, they graffitied them. And I just wish there was a community member that saw that and could give us the information necessary so we could get that culprit and deal with them appropriately. On that positive note, we will move forward to the posit- to the public participation portion. Alrighty, our first speaker, Donna? I thought we said no. Donna Ashmore, American Cancer Society. I could talk for 10 minutes about this lady and what a great lady she is in our community. And the next speaker will be Sterling King, followed up by David Honda. Donna?
I came to talk about the Henry Mail. Oh, no, wrong one. I came to talk about the trees. Nah, not that one either.
For three minutes.
Anyway, it's with the American Cancer Society. Our Relay for Life is this weekend, this Saturday, from 9:00 to 9:00 on Sunday. It's May 31st. And one of the things that we're having is the American Cancer Society is sponsoring a cancer prevention study, the CPS 3. This is a study that I know you already know about. And we would really, really be grateful if the council could really be in support of this and come out and do this cancer prevention study. It's for people between ages of 30 through 65. It's a one-time thing in our valley that's being set up. It's nationwide. There's gonna be 500,000 people that'll be put on this study. The original studies are the ones that linked cancer and tobacco and hormones and breast cancer and ovarian cancer. So it really is important. This is a study about lifestyles. It's from 3:30 to 7:30 on Saturday. You'll sign up there. You'll take a short name and address, things like that. And then, once every two years, you'll be given, you'll be mailed something that will give on what your lifestyle is. What do you drink? What do you eat? What are your environmental studies? The vitamins, things like that that'll really make a difference. It's a long-term study. And on the day of relay, you'll have some blood drawn. You'll sign up for this study. And it's very, very important. It's important that we get our city to back us. This is something that is going to be a cancer prevention study. There are very few of these studies out there, and this is how we do find out what's gonna be happening with this. So it's very important. I will leave these cards up front. And I hope to see the council there and support this very important to me. And I know who you all are.
Donna, before you leave, and I believe you will have this information. I see Candy Spar kind of hiding over there. I know how hard she has worked and other staff members that are present to make our Relay for Life. But we truly are one of the most successful relay-
We are the-
-for life anywhere in the nation, I believe.
In the county, we are definitely number- we're about number five in this area.
Where is it? Where is it at this time?
It's, it's Central Park.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're the-
Same where we were last year, Al.
Yeah, we're the biggest in the LA County.
I certainly encourage everybody to go and visit Relay for Life. It truly is a remarkable program.
This is a one-time study, too, for here.
Not only for the study, but it really brings an awareness and an appreciation for the huge battle that we all share in waging on something so terrible as, as cancer. And Donna, you're a phenomenal lady, and Candy Spar and others. I apologize for not knowing your names, but thank you. I know how hard you work to make this event a tremendous success for our community. It truly is one we're proud of. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.